One mentioned they're like, what do you do for school board meetings? Because we're in like a. All right. Call of duty is with order at six oh seven.
And to the republic, which stands. With liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. One. Is the approval of the twenty one, twenty two school calendar. We'll put that under nine point four one. And then. There's also a presentation. Sonya about outdoor learning. That will also involve a. Version, so it will be an action item, make that nine point oh two.
No.
All right, first overview of the approval of the minutes of February eleventh, twenty one. So that's Chris second. Yes. Comments? None, all in favor? For the minutes, February eleventh, twenty twenty one.
Aye.
The room is unanimous online. I heard Mary. About.
Aye.
Sounds like it's unanimous. Yeah, everyone, okay, motion passes. Total kind? Anything? Anyone here or on? Throw anything?
Yeah.
All right. Sir comments, just found out that the support staff has submitted to start negotiating a new contract, and they would like to meet on March seventeenth. So we need to put together a negotiating committee. Deb had already volunteered to do that. Anybody else here who would like to take part in negotiations for the support staff contract?
Brian, I'd be willing to do that. This is Mary.
Thanks, Mary. And Deb, you're still good with that, correct?
Excuse me?
Deb, are you still good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I'll be in touch with you guys about that, thank you. Let's see. I want to congratulate the teachers on starting to get your vaccinations. If you so choose, I feel like one of the positive things to come out of this pandemic is that there is a greater emphasis on the role that educators play in our society, on a national level anyway. And I think this is an example of that coming to fruition in a physical sense. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, I think it's well deserved. One other housekeeping thing, there are six of us, whether you know it or not, where terms end this June. That's a lot of turnover, so if you can shoot me an email and let me know if you plan to run again or if you don't, because I'd like to contact the towns and let them know that they might have an empty seat that they need to fill. So if you can plan on doing that to me for sometime in the next week, I'd appreciate it. So it gives them time to canvas and go out and see if there's anybody that's interested. In that vein, this will be the end of my term this June, and I won't be on the board next year. So it is also worth thinking about, if you want to be the chair, I can tell you that the salary alone makes it worth it, so. Think about it, and it's a good time to start, even though it seems early, June will be here quickly. That is all I had, sir comments, Chris?
Yes, I've got some updates for you all. First of all, echoing what Brian said about the vaccination, I do want to sort of just give you a brief outline of where things happened is that when the state changed to sixty plus, that then changed as far as educators. And the state originally was going to do sixty plus for educators. And then after the federal government came out under President Biden, that all educators could be vaccinated, the state then opened that up to educators from basically twenties up to sixty. So with that, emails are going back and forth, and I can see Lindsay down there. She knows I was bugging her all weekend. Walgreen, Walmart, and Hanniford's opened up their vaccinations for educators. So educators did not have to go just to clinics that were established by the state. So it's pretty well, it's open, a lot of teachers are getting vaccinated, support staff, bus drivers. I mean, it's open, so if you have that opportunity to get your appointment, take it and get that shot in the arm. That's what I'm recommending. Fine, stop it. With the new travel requirements, you saw those as well from Governor Mills and with the vaccinations, that April vacation was brought up at the last board meeting with regards to the possibility of having to look remote through the quarantine. When we come back from April vacation, that is no longer being put on the table by administration. So it's a new point, but we're not going to be asking for any action or any discussion on that unless obviously the board wants to. Because now with the travel requirements and with the vaccinations, quarantine is no longer an issue. We're concerned with the staff, again, first point, we'll take care of that. An American Rescue Plan, which is the federal stimulus plan that just was signed by President Biden today, is going to bring more funding to the state of Maine education. It's, we refer, we meaning superintendents, really referring to it as E number three because of all the different acronyms that are out there. It's the E, E sir, or E pro, whatever, I just call it E three. We do not have the full information as of yet. We were informed just yesterday that the Department of that is going through what's now law, seeing how that will affect, waiting to hear the amount coming to the state of Maine. Estimates are that it will be probably two times what the E two was, which is at the end of December. And we do not know yet what the, if there's restrictions or what the guidelines are, so we're waiting for that. As soon as we have that information, I'll make sure that you're all brought up. Brian mentioned the support staff agreement slash contract. It was approached today to start negotiations. We can put down next Wednesday, March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, at four P M. And that the support staff is not going to be bringing an M B A representative or a human syrup or lawyer with them. I would make the recommendation that we in turn negotiate as well. Well, Seth is, was approached today about his leadership team that he runs and looking at the return for the twenty one, twenty two school year. That leadership team asked Seth to put that on the agenda so that the individuals, and they represent the entire gamut of our school, can start to discuss that, where we're looking at, that's one thing we did when we started this school year off. We want to make sure that we're addressing concerns and questions and all of that before we return on twenty one, twenty two school year. And finally, the last thing I'll bring up to date on is the Maine Principles Association, which is involved with the unscholastic activities around the state. Their spring bulletins for baseball and softball have not been released as of yet. Therefore, we do not know any of the requirements or dates in which baseball and softball will be operating under. As soon as we know that, again, we'll get that information to you so you know. And with that, because of signups that just finished, there will be other nominations for a softball coach and for a baseball coach. We didn't know that up until assignments, so that'll be under nominations.
Okay, that will be our nominee?
Yes. That's it, I'll answer any questions if.
Hi. Kristen, this is Mary, I have a quick question. So that meeting on the seventeenth at four P M, will that be in the school, Chris, as a preliminary meeting within negotiation team?
Yes, we'll meet face to face.
Okay, so.
We'll set up a room so that we maintain the social distancing and the meeting at four P M.
Okay, and you'll send us an email to that effect, Chris?
Yes, I will.
You'll send us the email to that effect?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to make it clear, does this mean that there won't be remote learning when we're taken back from vacation?
I wish I could give you a definitive answer, but because you just never know what we've been dealing with over the last year and a half.
But as it stands now, you're not planning one, right?
I, no, I, I, why I didn't want to say it, a definitive answer. In my estimation, with what we're seeing, the trend that we're seeing, we would like to be back as normal as possible, and that means that it would be in person.
Oh, unless something else could see that.
Right, we just, we just never know.
There may go preemptive decision to, yeah, it will be, would have to be something reactive.
I will, I will say this to you, that if you look at the state of Maine, just the state of Maine, we are one of the leading states in the country as far as in person. Other states are trying to catch up to us, so we're sort of in that lead. And there are schools within our system, meaning the state, that are looking at just in person for next year.
Thanks, Chris, I real quick want to go back, in my comments, I should have recognized Sean. You, everybody who's here and probably at home too realizes how much smoother this whole thing is going. Sean took the time to put this together for us over the past couple of weeks, and I want to say thank you for that.
Thanks, Brian.
Makes the whole thing worse.
Appreciate that.
Georgia.
Yeah, I've got a few things to, to bring up. First of all, I can't believe that we are nearing the fourth quarter already. I, it's, it, I just can't believe it, but the third quarter is on the twenty sixth. We've just wrapped up New Year's, which Seth is going to talk a little bit more about. And on the nineteenth of March will be our next teacher workshop day, and teachers will be sort of delving into that data and trying to come up with some creative ways to, you know, approach students on an individual basis and maybe start looking at what next year will look like for kiddos, so that's pretty exciting. Let's see, second grade is actually tapping trees for maple syrup. Ally Loud continues to be with our fourth grade class, she's now doing it with her second grade class, and the kids are super excited about it, so I'm glad that that's able to continue. It sounds like we're going to be having a virtual student assembly. I don't have a lot of information about that, but that's pretty exciting towards the end of the month. I think Student Council is working on that. And let's see, Abby Thompson has a, an exciting announcement to make about the library. So on Tuesday, I attended a workshop called Middle School Magic, and it had about twenty to twenty-five different publishing companies that have a imprint or something that's specifically geared towards middle school. There were a number of authors, there are a number of guest speakers. And unbeknownst to me at the time, everybody who attended was automatically entered into a drawing for a free year membership to the Junior Library Guild and the R L R S Library One. What is the Junior Library Guild? I didn't know either, I just found out when they called me. It is a subscription program that is their sister organization to School Library Journal, which is under the umbrella of the American Library Association. And what they do is they work with you, with the librarian, one on one to figure out areas of need in your collection. What areas do you need some development in, what, where do you need more resources, more books, more materials? And you then can subscribe to get those materials sent on a regular basis to your library. The books that they send, the materials that they send have a lifetime guarantee. So if this book were to go and get damaged, water damaged, run over by a snowmobile, what have you, if it came from Junior Library Guild, they'll replace, they just send you another copy. Which is pretty awesome, that never, no more, no further funds come out of your pocket for replacement. So R L R S has won three different subject areas for the next year, which is, I think comes out to all, close to a two thousand dollar, you know, kind of prize. On my end, the really amazing part is the first step to this is that they do a complete collection audit. So I will send them all of the records for our books, and they're going to take a look at it, and they're going to tell us the average age of every section in our collection. Particularly for nonfiction, this is really important. Nonfiction books tend to go out of date every five to eight years. Information changes, the world moves on, things need to get updated. Pluto is not a planet anymore. So, so that information is going to be really valuable, they do a full diversity audit. They will, they, I mean, it's, they break down the data in a thousand different ways. I was planning to do this work individually, and the time that I was anticipating it would take me was probably eight to nine months, and I'll have all of this information by early April. So for the librarian, it's real exciting.
Thank you, Abby. I just have a couple more things really quickly. Last year, Michelle La Liberty was nominated as the Teacher of the Year for Franklin County. And this year, Sonya Johnson was nominated for Franklin County Teacher of the Year. We have two nominees in our building, the state is looking at honoring both years. So congratulations, and we wish you the best of luck.
All right, thanks, Georgia. Brian, anything?
Just two things, the ski teams finished their season, the girls won the conference championship for the third year in a row, which is pretty exciting. Then the other thing is that the Student Council President, Emma J D, and Vice President Connor Irvine met with Mrs. Campbell and Lindsay, and they're going to get, I think they're organic and biodegradable feminine hygiene products in all of the women's bathrooms and the gender neutral bathrooms.
Any reports, Kathy?
Oh, the Policy Committee met on March third, and we had another very productive meeting. We will be considering a few policies later on today, tonight, and the next meeting will be Wednesday, April seventh.
Finance, we met, two weeks ago, we met again just before this meeting, or just while we were late. We considered budget draft numbers two and three since the last time. The expenditure has come down now, it's a four point eight six percent increase. Also taxpayers, the local taxpayers, it's actually an increase of about a hundred forty thousand dollars on a five million dollar budget, I think that's a better indicator of where we're at. Some of the things are discussed with the budget, there are still some unknowns we have, so it will be a draft number four, we have some plowing, grounds keeping, we didn't get any bids, so we're still waiting to do that. We do also have an item that we're going to talk about later on, the finance of a loan, so that's going to come later on as an action item. We're going to meet again in two weeks. Our hope is to have a budget draft number four there, hopefully that'll be a final, and we'd like to present it to the board in April, so that's the tentative plan. One number I want to throw out there is right now is percentage of your property tax dollars that go to the school as compared to other places. The average for the state of Maine is fifty-two percent of the taxpayer, property tax dollars go to the school, your local school. From here, the last Maine Revenue Service data we have, which is two thousand nineteen, thirty-six percent goes to the school. Pretty big disparity there, I just want to point that out as we talk about the budget, we talk about cost per student, you know, we talk about percentage increases and expenditures. There are some other numbers out there that I think are important as well, and I think that's one. Even when you compare us to Franklin County, that number is forty-two percent for all of Franklin County. Again, we're thirty-six percent, so something to keep in mind as we get into the part of budget.
Shouldn't inspire overspend.
That's okay. Still, we're doing okay here statewide, I think, as well. Any questions, Serena, finance wise, Chris?
If we're going to be reviewing the budget on Thursday, April eighth, our next meeting, we'd humbly request that we receive at least forty-eight hours in advance of those number crunchers on the board and have a chance to see it.
Okay.
That's not unreasonable, though. All right. One thing also to mention, if you're going to talk numbers, is eighty-eight percent of the tax base is raised to the second full warning. But I'd be interested to see, the public usually asks this question, so hopefully you can have that, is what our cost per student is, because that does run on the higher side compared to other regions in the state.
So you know the reason for that, all right?
Yeah, the box kind of is still, so. But it'd be, it's a frequently asked question, so I'm hoping it will be in that.
I understand that it is, and I, it's a valid question, but at the same time, I think there are other numbers out there as well to give you a full picture of.
I'm disagreeing, just saying the public will be looking for that.
Anything else? All right, Jenny, facilities?
Yes, we met today, and we do meet every four o'clock before the school board meeting, so our next meeting is, actually, we have one scheduled next week to consider one of our issues we've been working on for a while, and that's looking at the second egress. We're still looking for a bid on, not a bid, but on a price for what needs to be done to make that passable for buses in an emergency. So we'll try and meet next week to look at that and give some kind of a recommendation. We, Jeff reported that the cameras are all up now, I think they're all, you know, you can be visible all around the school. And we're still working on getting the filters into the classroom, the right filters. And then we also discussed the bid on the snowplow and the summer work, and the bid was, was put out to bid, and we didn't get any responses. So we discussed different ways that we might be able to make it more worthwhile for different people by splitting summer and winter or doing two-year contracts, trying to get it so that someone in the community really can work with us. And then the last thing we did was we met with the, with Sonya and Nene about the playground project and an outdoor classroom, and they talked to us about what, what they are thinking. And just sort of an, a point to remember, the legacy project, our fundraising project, we had talked a year ago about doing something with an outdoor classroom and involving the community and for kids to learn more about the outdoor community too. So these two projects come together, and I think will work well together. But Nene and Sonya are going to report later on tonight about what they're thinking. Okay?
All right, thanks, Judy.
Okay, so everyone should have, okay, it looks like this in their folder. Okay, so I call it one year because today is the eleventh, and it's been almost exactly one year since we decided that we were going to go remote. Kind of still feel that weak as it was building, and you heard about other schools around the country closing. It seemed like it was going to be inevitable, and it's not safe that way, it's been one year. So the year review, so spring twenty twenty, we had three months approximately of remote instruction. Remember grades K through five, folks start review with skills maintenance. Grade system twelve offered asynchronous instruction with progression through the curriculum. We attempted, you know, attendance was like fifty percent, forty to fifty percent. Attendance was difficult last spring, same use. Fall twenty twenty, we started the year under a two-three hybrid model, two days in person, three days remote. October thirteenth, we switched to a four-one hybrid model. And then fall, winter twenty twenty, we had three periods of pure remote instruction during the second quarter of the twenty twenty school year. Students and grades K through twelve lost fifteen in-person days during those three periods of the move. And so I was sitting downstairs, so so far this year, I just want to kind of where we've been, what we're looking at, we've got about a hundred and ten school days this year, please do not count, I was rapidly collecting the calendar. Now of those a hundred and ten, with the nineteen regular remote days on Wednesdays at the end of the year, the additional fifteen, so far this year, we've been about thirty to thirty-one percent remote. I jump back to last March, if you look from March till now, we've had like a hundred and forty-five, like a hundred fifty-five, a hundred sixteen days of school. And I just quickly tried to remember last year, how many remote rambling emails I did. I think we've been about fifty percent remote in the last year. You could say forty-five or fifty, so. That's just a lot of disruption, so. So the details, we got stuff students. that's just a lot of disruption learning. So that was some data. So the details, we assess students in grades K through two and reading and math. The first time they did this, I think we were more worried than the kids. I was really stressed, like going in and the first day we go to assess, I see this little tiny kid in the garden, like what have I become? I'm going to make this kid take the standardized test on the computer? They did great. Like they loved it. They sat down, they did it. Sean was in there with me. And it was like, oh, this is easy.
Good times.
When you first went, little tiny thing, oh, sorry. We assessed students in grades three through 11 in math, reading and language usage. We did get in this March window or end of February, March, we got about 90% of our eligible students. There are some students that won't take the NWA. You know, I took those out. We get about 90%, which is good. I didn't get all our remote kids. We just couldn't get them in. It just didn't work out for all the kids. And at some point I was weighing this instruction time for getting them to take this. At that point, I figured I had enough to pull the data to get a picture. So we'll get them all in the spring. For students in grades K through 10, this is the first time to get the NWA assessment. And we did a handful of students who agreed six through 11 took the assessment remotely. It was a success. It has to be the right student, the right supports at home, the right environment, but they took it. The data, I would say that it was, it's good.
Set that quickly.
Yeah.
The 10% that didn't take it, were they mostly remote students or were they mostly in class? It just didn't, didn't work out.
There was some, we have some of those remote, some are.
So it's a mixed bag. It wasn't just one sector.
They might have missed a day and we can get them. It was mostly remote. Yep. Okay, the big picture there. So that's what I gave you. I tried to keep it big picture. That's kind of what I started with, to give an overall view of what's going on. So when you look at your sheet, I'll go over it in a second when we get through, but just you have the, the mean RIT score for grade. I tried to find a good way. So a RIT score is used to measure and compare academic growth in NWA. It kind of gives you a picture where a student's ready to learn. When they're going that score, when they get to that score, it's where they're as likely to get an answer wrong as they are to get it right. It's like their speed spot. The test goes up and down as they're playing. I provided the fall, winter norms. I did the fall because to me that actually is the one that made the most sense to me when we started this, considering the amount of remote instruction we had. Especially K through five, the way the asynchronous. I gave you the percent of students in each percentile range. You can see that on there on the right. And then I broke the data down by grade span also to give that.
So is that comparison to ourselves? Is that our means?
Then we have our mean and then the norms are national. The 20.
Based on this year's data, right? Everyone that was tested.
No, no, they're out in swing. So the norms in NWA, they review them every five years. It was 2015 norms before. The norms on this, the 2020 norms, they redid the whole thing. It actually went down across the country. Math went down like on the average of four points, I believe. And they give you, they have a fall, a winter and a spring norm. So kids that took it in the winter, when they read, when they did the norms in 2020, this was the mean.
So does that mean that, I'm sorry, I'm starting to understand the comparison. So does that mean the norm is based on during the pandemic?
No.
Adjusted up or it's a five-year, rolling five-year average?
Yeah, that's what I believe when I read the issue. Yeah, they, I haven't seen pandemic norms yet. It'd be nice to give us some.
Okay, so this is 2016 to 2020 averaging those five. That's the norm.
I don't know exactly how they create their norms, but I believe they look at five years with the data across the country, everyone that takes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yep. So this is, these are the three things I want to look at as we go through. Where are we now? How does student scores compare to the fall norms? How does student, what scores compare to the winter norms? And is this what we expected to see? Okay, so here is math. So like I said, I have K through 12, I think K through 11, we didn't do 12 graders. Often times they don't really give us reliable data and the norm might go to 11th grade. And then you'll see I broke it down K2, 3, 5, 6, 8 and that through 11. And then if you look, I tried to make it, this is a lot of numbers. I took off standard deviation. We have like, some of these are like nine kids. Standard deviation went from like eight to 22. You know, we have one class where there was 10 kids. Most kids around like the 220, 235, you have 1, 2, 61. I mean, you know, it's hard with these small numbers. So I tried to do with the bold, if the number is bold, that means that class exceeded both the fall and winter norm. The tau size is, they exceeded the fall. If you look through and you see a tau size underlined, that means they didn't meet the fall norm, so they didn't meet the, exceeded. So in math, all classes K through 11 exceeded the fall norm. Okay? And then you'll see that some of the grade spans, let's go to six through 12, six through 11. You look at these numbers over here, the kids scored really well. Oh yeah, and these, these are for the whole band. So these percentile ranks are for the whole, all the grades. And as I go there. So I expected to see, I expected not as good, actually. You know, I knew six through 11, we've been with asynchronous learning. Really, if the kids are logging in, it's, they're still progressing. They're getting their full class and teachers are there. I did not expect like 85%, 80% of the kids being at or above the average percentile range. And that's at the winter norm. These percentile ranges that compare to the winter norm, that's what the system does when you take it in winter. At the K through five, I think still I didn't expect it to be, I was hoping that everyone would maybe meet the fall. Because just when you look at it, K through five, remote is not ideal. I know parents in the room, it's hard. I, I got my son. It's just not easy, that remote piece. So really, some kids, when they're not here at school, they're not really doing school. That's just a fact. I don't have a percentage, but it's how. So we look, we had some weird distributions in the K through two. That's not really very normal. We have 24 on the S end, 27 in that end and 12 in the middle. You know, so a lot of our planning is going to be focused on how to bridge some of those gaps. Yeah, any questions about math? Math was solid. It was our strength. Language usage was also a strength, but I'd say out of all of it, math was a strength.
So I'm struggling with the the italic. So pretty much everything met, met or exceeded either both or one.
Yeah, so if it's bold, it means it exceeded the winner, like.
Yeah, I understand. I just can't tell the difference between your italicized and your normal. So are there any normal in the mean RITs? Because it's hard for me to tell which ones are italicized.
Normal, what do you mean?
Well, in your mean RIT, the bolds are easy to tell.
Yeah.
The underlines are easy to tell. The italicized versus regular type are not. So the rest of them all italicized?
Yeah, unless you see an underline. No, unless you see an underline, yes, they're all italicized.
Okay, so we either, we either met or exceeded fall, winter, normal, or we either exceeded fall.
Yep.
Wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I did that because when I, it looked like I was trying to like make it stand out a little bit. It's just a lot of numbers on a page. And I looked at it 100 times. I could see it really easy, so I tried to get something.
I just couldn't see a regular one, so I'm assuming that we're not.
No, math was. Okay, go.
Thank you.
Reading, just start to see some underlines in there. And again, this, this really, once you get into the reading, it starts to show that we're going to do a lot of our work is at K through five. I mean, again, you see six through 11 is really looking great. I mean, it's a test, you know, a test to the teachers, the work they've been doing. Shows that synchronous, while not differently liked with their home and internet is an issue. It is the ideal system. Yeah, it's kind of similar. Overall, this is our lower one. But if you look at the percentages, compare the pages, for the at or above the average percentile range, it's pretty close. And again, as you look at these, whenever we do data, you look at these numbers, like if you say, say, see, I don't know, 229 here. So if you don't, there could be a big outlier in there. It could be like a 260 or it could be like somebody with a 202. I didn't dump any data. I had a kid that took 15 minutes. It all went in. I didn't bull and cherry pick anything. I just put it all in. So we have these small groups, student counts of like 10 to 15. It is a picture. Any questions? Again, kind of just flatten it out a little bit. You know, you'd expect more of a role distribution there. Language usage, another strength. Here, they don't, we don't do this K through two. It starts at third grade. Again, we had a P underline. Third grade, second grade. But that's exactly what I expected to see. And again, I thought it'd be a lot more underlines on there. I can't believe, it just goes to show our kids are still chugging along and.
Is lang, so language in third grade is the first year that
Yes.
it's ever measured or tested.
Yep.
So that doesn't.
Well, on this assessment.
Right, but it doesn't overly seem unusual that it's going to take a year to. And you said it tied the norm, but yeah.
Yeah, this one, I guess I could, I put that, I probably shouldn't have.
So tie, round it down?
Yeah.
Is that how it's figured?
Yeah, I probably shouldn't have outlined that one. I went through this last one.
No problem. Just trying to understand the data.
That's a lot of numbers. I think overall though, it paints a, we're, we're in good shape, but we'd still go there. In a typical year, I think we'd have seen almost everything beating the winter. And we typically do really well compared to the norm. So our next steps, on the 19th, we're going to drill into the data. At the grade span, grade, student level, you know, I see us doing is starting out like a big picture, look at school, you look at grade levels, then you look at grades and classes. And we're going to use a protocol. So as you go through this, hopefully we're done, we'll have implications and next steps for instruction, programming, professional development and curriculum analysis to kind of move forward. Our big goal, you know, to do this, I really wanted teachers do their classroom assessments. We have that data, but it's like an overall school picture with a common assessment. See where are we? Like after a year of this, you know, where do we stand? And to be able to use that to plan and start working our way out of it, you know, and not only the rest of this year, but what's next year going to look like? We're going to start. Use the data for short, long-term planning, identify needs for targeted interventions. We've already started to do this. The new person we hired, we've had two meetings so far, using this data, classroom data to start grouping kids, to start bridging the gap. Getting them ready for the norm. We're going to review, create and require that essential content for the grade span now. This is just math. So that's kind of where we're going. I saw as I was kind of reading one of my books, you know, sinking in from an admin standpoint and board. Kind of struck me, you cannot force commitment. What you can do is you can nudge a little here, inspire a little there, provide a role model. Primary influence is the environment you create. You know, looking at data is scary sometimes as a teacher and educator because it puts like, it's you on a piece of paper. But it's just one snapshot. You know, it's just a measure used. And really to remember that this is about growing, fixing maybe what needs to be fixed, celebrating successes and just supporting and creating this environment. That's so important, the growth, learning on that organization. So, yeah, first we are. Any questions?
Thanks, Seth.
And just off that, I have an update. I was in a workshop for a media day with the commissioner during the weekend. So the state assessment for the spring is going to be NWA from math and ELA. We have from March 1st to June 15th. We administer that and we have to give it to kids three through, three through eight, third year high school. We'll do everybody again. What's nice is they're going to pay for NWA. They're going to contact us, reimburse us for those grade spans. It will be a thousand dollars like that received. I don't remember, but that's good. Science Numeridian won the bid and I'm in this meeting with the people that are like designing this and they didn't, they're like, yo, we still don't know what it's going to look like. It is, we can do NWA remotely. The Numeridian science assessment for five, fifth, eighth and third year high school. It's online, but we have to do it in person. So we don't know what that's going to look like. They, they have protocols. We don't have any of the protocols yet. So that's what's going on there. The state is applying for three waivers. They're applying for a waiver from accountability system. They're applying for a waiver from the 95% minimum participation and they're applying for a waiver from public reporting at the state level. Because basically there are schools that are still onboarding, like they found out about this. They haven't even onboarded NWA into their, into their school yet and it's, they're going to have to use this for their assist, assessment for the state. So the state's trying to waive all that. What they really want schools is just have something in place to be able to measure their students' growth and to be able to use that to plan instruction. So. And they're going to use this new system definitely until next year, at the end of next year, while they look at completely redesigning the whole state assessment system, away from like rope knowledge to something that's meaningful and useful. Like real-time data, not like we take it March to get the results in the next November. So that's kind of exciting. We'll see what they do to it. You know, they could start with good intentions and then lock it up again. I don't know, but it's kind of exciting that they do it. So that's who they are. So yeah.
Thanks, Seth.
Thanks, Seth.
Yes. One appointment which again was provided to you. Georgia can speak to it. We're recommending the academic interventionist, K through five, Katie Willis.
Okay, Chris, you asked for a bio and you're going to get one.
Awesome.
All right, so Katie Willis, she, they are one of our border patrol families in town. She carries a general elementary K to eight endorsement and a conditional early childhood pre-K to kindergarten endorsement. She has a BA from the Appalachian State University in North Carolina. She has taught in kindergarten, fourth grade, first grade. She has worked in, she has been a Title I coordinator in Washington State. She has also been a homeschool liaison for pre-K program. And she has worked in special education and in general education, doing summer programming. She has, let's see, three. She has, she has 11 years of teaching experience. There were two, and she also has GT experience as well. There were two candidates that were interviewed for the position. Both candidates were in-house and they were both very, you know, very qualified for the position and we, she's going to be a great addition to our Title I department and I'm looking forward to working with her.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm making much when we approve. Chris moves to approve Katie Willis's math literacy interventions. There are several. Aaron, any discussion? On favor of approving Katie Willis or approving Katie Willis for math literacy interventions? That's Mary, I have.
Yes.
And who else do we have there? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, please. And then you have.
Two spring sport.
Brian, she says thank you.
Two spring sport nominations. First, I'll do a place for softball as James White. Yep. Jim's, James Smith.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
He was, he was fired last year, but was not able to coach due to COVID canceling the season entirely. He has a lot of experience. He coached UMF's women's softball team for one year. They, at that time, it was a part-time job. They made it a full-time job, so conflicted with this work. So he had the weeds. So he's coming to us with a lot of experience.
Yeah, and then high school baseball is Jeff LaRochelle.
I don't have much to say about that. I do.
You got enough of your team then, huh?
Well, we're, we're close. We're, we're, he comes up to drive on. It's a, the baseball's right, right there on the wing.
Okay, so motion to approve Jeff LaRochelle, the baseball coach, and then James Smith is the softball coach. So that's Chris's second. Yes, discussion.
Your test one.
Your test one in the opposition to that. Motion passes Jeff LaRochelle, baseball coach, and James Smith as the softball. All right, we had some action items.
All right, we had some action items, we added on, so we'll put those first. The first one is the review and approval of the, uh, 21.2 school calendar. Or do you want to talk about that?
Oh, let's see, um. First of all, I'd like to make a note that there, there has been one update to it since you guys got it, um, and it's not anything, uh, major. Up in the left-hand corner, we had listed trimesters. We used to be both trimester and quarters. We are no longer, so we took the trimester out. Um, let's see, we added a workshop day to the beginning of the year. Teachers, um, really need more time at the beginning of the year to prep and get ready for the start of the school year, so. Right, right. Uh, let's see, what other changes did we make? Uh, we took an October workshop day out. Uh, well, we moved it, I should say. Uh, we kept the, the workshop day at the end of Christmas break there. Um, teachers really loved that. We loved that too. They had an opportunity to plan coming back from Christmas break. Let's. The March workshop day is still the same. And I don't think any, there are any other major changes. Three snowshocks, snow days still added in, workshop day at the end. Pretty straightforward.
All right, so a motion to approve the school calendar as the end of the only change being the removal of the trimester.
Just to add to that, so you all know, is that this calendar meets the statutory requirement for CTEs. Brought this to the foster test. Well, under the five is similar.
When this foster test, uh.
Uh, so it's on the first and there's us.
We have a discussion.
All right, motion to approve the first. Anybody? That's Kathy, second. Anyone? Jess?
Um, those of you who followed me over the years know that I'm opposed to any school days before Labor Day if possible. One, because the weather in September is a heck of a lot better. I think having an extra couple of days for the staff to get ready for then would make sense rather than losing that whole week. A lot of your high school students that's, they get to participate, that's the last of the summer season. Uh, making money and, and doing their other things to get ready. June, it rains almost every day in there, so if those two days disappeared, it would be June 14th and 15th. And we push into, it's after graduation anyways, because it says it's the 13th. So to me, I would like to propose an amendment to not have September 1st and 7th. Those foster students, if they need to go, can go and, uh, do their things, especially where we've gone with everything we've removed and everything over the year and learn to adapt. Uh, I would like to see schools start on the 7th of September versus the 1st.
Will I speak to? Reasons to start up the program?
Mr. Downing, would that bring us to more than five similar days?
For the foster test?
Yeah.
In the past, we allowed students to go and then batch it, so it didn't get out.
Can't give a straight answer because I don't know what the other schools.
Okay, so I think we would need an answer to that and, and also would RTA need, would this need to go back to RTA?
Consultant.
Yeah.
Then I move the table into the April.
When were you looking to publish it?
I'm sorry.
When were you looking to publish the calendar?
Um, I mean, yeah, I think it can wait till next month. That's fine.
Right, the table, uh, consideration of school calendars will be April, uh.
And I will get the answer for the foster test.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second addition we had to the action items is, uh, Sonya has a presentation about the, uh, classroom building, but after we're, we're into those.
Thank you for entertaining my proposal and I thought like some people heard it earlier in any facilities, um, meeting, so.
Absolutely.
Um, so a couple of, uh, a couple of things that led up to that formulating this, uh, proposal. One was I worked with enough graduating classes and in particular last year's class, um, when they have money left over, when they pay for graduation, their trips and whatnot. They generally do something to give back to their school community or to the community at large. And it's been very difficult to find that thing that they, they can, they can all agree on the one, but number two, something that really inspires them, moves them. Because there are a lot of little things that have happened around here and nothing big that really kind of brings everybody's thoughts and brings community back to their school. So, um, in discussing with the class of 2020, obviously we're in a pandemic and there was a lot of discussion about a lot of things, but this was one that came up in our discussion and Mrs. Grau was still working with them on this. Um, they have to make a decision about their extra money that they have left from last year. And so this is one that we're working with them and we're just bringing it to the school board to inform and also hopefully get support and, um, guidance about how to teach. So the outdoor, uh, classroom learning center, uh, it was really kind of started by Nene Grigson through our garden. So this was our first, uh, first outdoor learning space that has moved around a little bit on our property. It went from out by the bus loop, now it's out by the portal globe. Uh, the children spend a lot of time there. Nene does a lot of education around that, uh, piece. Um, on our, on our playground practically. And I've always thought it's, uh, kind of sad. It feels just stranger than, uh, like at home. It's kind of there and if you've done playing and you want to go there, so, um, that's kind of a piece that we wanted to bring together with the idea of outdoor learning, so.
Yep.
So Nene has a group of small children and that she, I think they're third, fourth graders, um, that she spends a lot of time on playground. And I, Lily and I went out this fall and did an assessment of that area and see what had been done and its condition and you know, this is what kind of happens when you have a little project here, a little project here, you have a lot of little things, but nobody maintains them and not linked and nobody, there's no cohesion there. So with the garden and this trail system, which was, um, put together by, uh, I think the outdoor club. The outdoor club and intercession, they've done a lot of trail work. They've had specialists to talk about how to treat smaller spaces. We looked at this and behind that little gate there is a perfect space for a classroom. We've bought out and measured it. Um, done some field work there. It really needs some maintenance. The apple trees are falling down. Um, and there's a lot of damage that's done in the big storm this past year. Um, a lot of that, um, has been brought to the ground, but it's still just lying there. And so there's a lot that needs to be done and if we have a project around it, a lot of it probably will get done, so. Um, given outdoor kitchen, which is just a start. Again, it's another little pocket that got started, but could really expand. Um, and then you can see some of the damage, um, on some of the other slides that now the trees are down, but you know, with some vision around all that, but really, uh, you know, I think that's my problem. Um, so that we've been looking at whatever, um, information we could gather and the, um, the rectangle on the picture up there is kind of a reference of where we're looking. We did speak to the Kingfield School District and their principal. Uh, Tiana was a great help, uh, talking about how they progressed over there with their outdoor learning space. They have a, I believe a 20 by 40, uh, concrete slab that they worked for. Um, they have community, um, volunteers, so they're moving really slowly. Um, but they hope by this spring they'll have the pavilion piece up and over it, um, and that would be that outdoor life space. And she was really instrumental in giving us some guidance about who to contact, timeframe, um, you know, how fast is we moving right now with all the building and construction going on. And so we have a lot of data from her that we built into this proposal. Um, currently, if we have support and, and know that people are interested in this pursuing, uh, Nene's working on a mini grant, um, on this side, which would it's a smaller grant, it's only about $1,500. Um, that would help us to build at least benches that, um, we can sit on, but have a backrest that come up and over and, and create a, a working platform. So they, there's certain multiple factors, but that's, um, furnishings and some of the outdoor education piece would be in that smaller grant. Uh, I'm hoping to move on with the Onion Foundation grant, which is a more sizable, um, grant that I think we can ask, I, I, I'm not sure, I suppose $2,000 if you can ask for. Um, I'm going to go a bit of a hole and shoot the match if people want to support me and help me. Um, but it's meant specifically for outdoor learning and especially around the arts where, um, things like music are really difficult to do indoors. There's a lot of things that are really strictly for the performing arts area. This is off our place where some of those things might be able to happen. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. We're hoping to keep our vision focused, focused on the pavilion and the platform because if you don't have something big, people keep doing little things here and there, but it never really gets to what we need because it's a space where people are comfortable to learn about their environment. And if you put walls up, then that means schools, why do you do it? So it's really, we have a very clear focus and vision around this project. Um, these are the students, uh, on probably the cold state of winter, we got, we got up there with Nene and we were flying off. They are so incredibly excited about this. If we don't get something going, I'm pretty sure we're going to build it with whatever some crap we see, which we'll see in just a minute. Um, but they're really excited. They're learning a lot about, you know, looking at the terrain and, and whatnot. So authority education is starting to formulate, which is wonderful. Um, so kind of our steps on the left-hand side, just the things that we're looking at, finding data around, um, grant writing. We've already spoken to Jeff and, um, we will be working through him obviously, and then through Mr. Dye, um, for approval of anything as we move forward. But we just wanted to really make sure that we were transparent and that we could support the whole week. It's a lot of time that we were willing to do and we were enjoying it, but we just want to make sure we're supported and that we're not investing time in something that really isn't necessary if you don't. Um, so for our considerations, the class of 2020 does have about $7,500. It's a nice piece of change to start with. If this is something that everybody agrees to. Um, it does make us a little more favorable in the grant process because we have matching funds. Whenever we have matching funds in support of your school, like when we talked to the facilities committee, they thought, you know, a board, a board letter that supported us, um, would probably, you know, really boost our chances of getting some of this stuff. Um, but we're also looking, every time I turn on, if somebody's saying, what can we do this, we want to get around the project everywhere from EcoVenture, the Heritage Trust, um, the sports and guides, the saddleback, there's a number of people that want to do things for our school community. And I think that if we give them a vision, it's going to be, it's going to happen. Um, I've talked about some considerations will be the facilities here for, for the, um, and that's so. If it, or this list is going to increase and I'm sharing this document with others, feel free to email me and, and be a part of this as a new school. Um, one of our alumni, Nels, Nene's son, did this, uh, drawing for me, uh, probably five or six years ago, it's back on the margins in front of our building. So we have, we have alumni that are coming back. We have another student who's a wildlife biologist who's willing to come and go to kids and look at that area, see any construction that bothers the wildlife or what it might be for the actual environment out there. And, uh, those kinds of considerations are education and, and I think the kids are seeing that later in construction. So I'm pretty excited about that. He will, uh, Nels is arriving here this coming week, so he will readdress the plans with us. It's a little bit different than what we wanted to have for that space, but it'll be more depending on what we can make of funding, 20 by 40, so what sort of, um, Kingfield, uh, deck four and remarking a little bit about 30 by 40, this room for both of those, um, side spots, this is the way to have. And then I, this young boy, this.
I think that's all I've got for the.
Yeah, the video.
Oh, the video. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, um, just to let you, just so you can see the kind of, this is a, a young dominant, a little bit of quality and he gets us up.
Hi, this is my friend Brody and he is out here helping plan an outdoor classroom for Rangy's school. He's going to show you that we found a spot that's pretty level and he's going to show you that we're going to have to cut down a few trees. Go ahead, Brody, show us where they are. Okay, and then, uh, can you show me the perimeter of what, what you're thinking?
You see all the wood?
Okay.
That's the terminal.
All right, and then what are we going to build on there?
We're going to build walls. Right there.
Like a pool?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll have some bench seats on it maybe?
Yeah.
Yep, and will we have a roof on it, you think?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else you want to say?
If you like the house, please go to Rangy's.
I think we have a new car salesman there. Um, but they are very excited about it and, um, I, I'm just kind of, I just wanted to keep you informed and if I have your support and I can forward, I think it will be one of the, for our students and, and, um, fine. Thank you for.
Uh, so to be clear, Sonya is looking, uh, based on, uh, first farmer facilities, his experiences with grant writing, the, uh, it's going to look a lot better if there is more support for it. So it's not more financial support, it's more support of project moving forward. So I'll put a motion forward, uh, board will support the outdoor resilient, uh, project.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Adams, House here online. I've got Deb, I've got Jane. And Mary. Mary there? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, next thing we got, um, consideration of the fourth quarter paid as well, scheduled.
Go ahead, Georgia.
Well. I'm excited about this conversation. Yeah, um, so we, at this point in time, um, have only a handful of remote students in our building. So we are proposing that, um, starting the week of April 5th, we, um, go back five days with, with an 11:30 dismissal on Wednesday. Um, there is some level of planning that still has to happen with some remote learners. Um, and some professional development that needs to happen across grade spans. So that is our proposal. Five days a week.
All right, so the motion is as of April 5th, go back a five day a week with an 11:30 AM dismissal on Wednesday. First Karen, second. Kathy, any discussion? Chris?
Uh, just a question. I know we had three instances in second quarter, which we had to go remote. Just curious if you can speak to that without disclosing any medical information, but of all the times we've had to shut down or switch our schedule for remote, how much of that has been on K to five? And then my second question is, have we had any community spread within the school af- after or before such a scenario?
Okay, um, so we've had no community spread in our building, like we've had not, no cases of that. Um, a majority of, as far as in the building. Are, uh, most of our, are the times that we had to go remote were based on, um, just the number of staff or kids that were affected by it, but not necessarily positive cases, like they weren't positive in the building, like.
Okay. My thoughts are, I'm not overly opposed to what you proposed, but what they'd rather see is especially in the K through five, that it's five. My thoughts are, I'm not overly opposed to what you proposed, but what they'd rather see is especially in the K through five, that it's five full days. Tell the bell. And not at eleven thirty, but just five full days. I'm concerned about, we did get some testing back in there. And it seems pretty clear that the six through twelve is, is doing fine and with the asynchronous stuff. But for the last of days we've already had this year and all that, I would think it would be great if we could go that fourth quarter, K through five fully in. We have in K through two and we have in three, four, five, we have the extra teachers of both. So I think the staffing issue should be able to be addressed at least on the K through five. I'm not an expert in that, but I'm just. The logic in my head is, is a couple of extra staff people we stacked up for COVID, that maybe that can cover if we have an issue there. But I would really like to see K through five, five days a week full on, sorry, name of that.
I think there's an issue of equity there for the teaching staff that I have, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree that, you know, at the, at the K five level, that that intervention, you know, is, is needed. But at the K five level, there's still, that, that is probably, you know, the grade span where the most planning still takes place. We do have a couple of teachers that are still run, running two platforms that still need to meet with their remote students and need time to do that during, during that day.
How many students are we down to on K through five that are remote?
I think two or three. Yeah.
Is there any way that we're discussing to see if it's two or three, you can say, look, we want to try to run five days here, provide an equal and equitable situation for staff and say, can you, can you, can you move in this direction so that we can get everyone all together and in?
We've done that.
See what the thing is, hang on too, from an instructional curriculum standpoint, is that K five span, like even if we had all the kids back in, the additional prep that they've told me about, like all the stuff that they prep, used to prep like whole group, now everyone gets their own materials. The work we're going to have to do, planning for next year, the reason like on that Wednesday, is if we go to the one thirty, we get like an hour of professional development time, additional planning time. By the time everyone settles in, you get to work, it's, you got like forty five minutes. We're hoping that, you know, eleven thirty dismissal, get the kids out here by like eleven forty five, we'll still have that to our chunk to give the K five teachers some time they need to plan. It's like during, so we still have two split classrooms that have vertical team almost every week to plan, you know, you have teachers teaching fourth and fifth grade in one room. My wife's teaching K and one. And it was a nice, we felt as a compromise to still acknowledge the additional workload and get kids to build in five days a week.
I just, it's a lot of work. I just struggle with it because I really, and I hear those aren't, those are not, not valid ones. I mean, I agree with those concern and I understand staff fatigue and all those pieces and that stuff. I just think it's so critical to get these kids into five days steady routine. And we just talked about all the days missed and we haven't had to spread within the school. We've done everything there. And staff's getting vaccinated. I'd really like to see that K through five is just five days a week with a regular schedule. And you've got two extra staff people working in that range there that maybe that can be offset, that there's some coverage. So that that way people can have a little extra prep time or what we're going to do. I don't know. Well, if we're taking everybody out as separate rooms.
Squeeze in a little bit, but then get the whole.
I, I'm still struggling to be like three students out of all of K through five that we now have to have, every teacher has to come up with two forms of instruction.
We have to offer, yeah, we are saying we have to offer for the remainder of the year.
And see what happens too is like right now, we have to keep putting in reproof appliances. So like if you like cruise along, I'll say like, oh, you have three remote kids for the week of this. You have three remote kids the week after April. You have three remote kids the first week of April. We have two remote kids. And it's just, you know, as admin, our job is to, you know, support students and sometimes that means taking care of the people that teach them. And we can't break teachers because they're dangerously close.
Um, you know. I get it. I'm just asking these questions to take their valid questions. We're all working hard. I'm tired too. It's hard in every profession right now.
There's still a hardship for, for parents, obviously, but I think when you look at the big picture, it's two less hours per week than what we were doing three COVID. That's, that's, that's been a long way.
I think the challenge is also for working families is if they're getting out at eleven thirty, it's still a day that those families are going to still have to make.
That's what I mean. It's two hours.
We have an issue with the transportation. Yeah, we want to, because you have your drivers picking up kids at that hour, whatever.
Okay. Just want to brainstorm now.
All right. So the motion is five days a week, starting April fifth, eleven thirty dismissal on Wednesday. We had yeah, we already had move in seconds. So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That's in the room here, also online. Motion passes. Next thing we got.
You had a question in the meeting room. Joanne, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you can ask your question.
Sorry, I've got kids all over me. But Chris, are you aware, you were talking about the staffing. Are you aware that school was canceled today for K through two because of staffing issues?
We did get an email on that. I don't know the exact details, but we, as a board member, we leave the day to day administration to the administration. I just didn't know about it, but not getting further information.
Yeah, that may have helped. And also on that note too, I think Paul, you were the one that spoke about transportation. Really, there's no benefit for me for having an additional, that opening up that Wednesday for them to come to school. Because by the time that we drop them off, off at school and then have to turn around and pick them up from school, it, it just becomes more kind of messy than just planning on having them at home on Wednesday. So is it going to be an option for us to continue remote on Wednesday?
As a parent, given that circumstance, what would you recommend that the board do?
Just keep the same schedule through the end of the year for the kids' sake. I mean, is it worth disturbing their routine at this point to get them in school for two hours, two and a half hours? Is it beneficial to them? Is it beneficial to all the families? Or is there going to be any talk about bringing transportation back?
Those are good questions.
This is where I'm coming from. I run a weekly stu-, well, not for K through five, we don't have grades. But I run a weekly student of concern list and I'm constantly monitoring, monitoring scores and grades. Remote is not ideal. Our most, most at risk students are not learning in remote days. To me, this is the best compromise. Get some of those kids in the building for three and a half hours. We go to one thirty, we're not doing lunch. There's not going to be a recess and when we go to one thirty, we're going to spend a whole other time just feeding kids and then they're going to have recess. So we're getting the meat of our instructional time in for the morning. And to me, we got, you know, it's just a compromise to get people in the building. If we stay remote, we're going to still have fifty percent of our kids, maybe it's only thirty now, that aren't checking in, high school, middle school. You know, my son, we stay home, we come to work, his education is being, you know, dampened by remote. And I think it's just, I think about this when I wake up in the morning, I think when I go to bed. To me, this is a really good way to get the kids in. And it's not ideal, but our priority is the education of kids. And if we can offer this much remote time and still take, I mean, in person time, still take care of a staff that we need to maintain for another three months, hopefully into next year. This is the best option right now. I mean, we could stay remote on Wednesdays. That's not what's best for kids. I don't believe.
And we did decide as far as like the lunch piece goes, that they would be taking the lunch with them, right? Is that what we decided? So that's that time that, that we're not going to be giving up or not, because that process takes a really long time to feed. It's right now breakfast and lunch. So with the Wednesday option, it allows us, doing it that way, it allows them to take it with them. If the parents sign them up or they so choose, so you take that time, that much time.
We're just really trying to get the things back in the building. But like Seth alluded to, trying to take care of the staff as well and making sure that teachers still have time to work together and plan. And in regards to today's going remote with K to two, that was no reflection on K to two. We had eight staff out of our building today, K to twelve. And I'm not going to get into the reasons why they, the staff were out, but the staff are allowed to take medical time if they need to, and they're allowed to take personal time. And we just got caught in a bad place today. We currently have one full time sub that we can call. We do have a couple of other subs that can only work certain times and certain days, and it didn't work for us. So we were over capacity at what we could cover. So we tried to continue learning as best we could today and let the least disruption to our students as possible.
I just want to say, I think what my dad said, I know I'm older and I can like take my siblings to school and stuff. So I don't really understand the parent troubles, but my brother's in elementary school, my sister's in middle school and I'm in high school. And I see all the grade levels on Wednesdays when I wake up in the morning. I mean, I myself don't do very much on Wednesdays. I usually just catch up on my work the next day in school. And I think even just going to eleven thirty from all the kids that I've talked to and my siblings, just that short amount of time in like a structured learning environment, we will get a lot more out of our classes and learning than sitting at home on a computer with a lot of distractions. Even though it's a shorter time.
We're putting a parliamentary procedure to, you've already told us, this is all at this point.
Yeah.
Be good to get the if there are the current comments, we should pause a second, hold this in the future. But I think it would be great as a comment, just with the, with the K to remote, I'm sure you guys are constantly juggling and all those pieces. And hopefully those staff that have planned medical and those are giving you as much advance notice so you can try to fill those gaps. It sounds like it wasn't able to be accomplished for today. So I think the more we can try to give notice to everybody, it's, it's a tough thing. It just makes it easier, I'm sure. A lot of parents that I've talked to, not in this, in this district, in other district, everybody, I think everybody in general, as we approach the one year anniversary of this, is, that wins in with a lot of pieces. And I think we all just need to try to take a deep breath and keep working on this. I appreciate techniques time to discuss those issues. I think there were valid things that I thought about and heard. And she took next to time to kind of walk through those and
Yeah, it's certainly, but I'm not going to knock you for some of that. So.
Let's try to get those before we vote.
I just want to make sure that we answer John's question about the transportation piece. And that being that we still can't accommodate that because of the spacing issues on the buses. So when she had asked about possibly bringing that back, we still have the spacing that we have to maintain on the buses. So that has not changed.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Jared. But next, we got a consideration of this, the refinance and energy efficiency law. There is some background on this. We have a loan with a four year balance. Four hundred fifty three thousand dollars, about what it is. Sheila recommended that we look into resigning, so we save the school some money. So that's what's been done. Quick, make sure we're on the right side of the conflict of interest laws before we start this.
Chris, a minute. Yeah. I, Chris Farmer, I, I worked for Scott Egan Savings Bank, and so I have to excuse myself from the process and really discuss. So I assume into our school policies.
Brian, John is in Zoom and ready to ask, answer the questions you have.
Who is in Zoom?
John Stempel.
Okay. So real quick, what I also need to do is let you know that this was also to avoid any conflict of interest. These were sealed bids. They were put out by Sheila that were returned, I think, last week. So the only thing we can make a decision on are the bids that came back. Does everybody have those in front of them? So as far as discussion, we can't do that with anybody that's online or in the room, but we have to make a decision based on sealed bid that we received back. Everybody have that? So we've got three banks, but four bids. The reason for that is there's two different bids from Franklin Savings. So the first one is Andrew Scoggin. You can see that it's a two point two five percent interest. And Sheila has figured out over the four year remainder, remaining life alone, about ten thousand four hundred dollars in savings. The next one is from Franklin. That's two point two five percent, very similar savings, ten thousand four hundred. There's a second from Franklin and the one there is a one point seven five percent interest rate. The difference there is that, the caveat is RSU seventy eight will also have to switch its banking to Franklin Savings in order to take advantage of that interest rate. And then Scott Egan is the last one, two point oh two percent, and the savings there is twelve thousand five hundred. That second Franklin, Sheila didn't have time to put the savings in there, but essentially it would be about, what do you figure, another twenty five hundred, so probably about fifteen thousand dollars worth of savings if we were to switch all of our banking over to Franklin and do it that, that way. So the finance committee had for this tonight, our recommendation was to go with the Scott Egan amount, which would be about a twelve thousand five hundred dollar saving, two point oh two percent. The board needs to vote on this though, so before we have our discussion.
I just wanted to know, who, who do we bank with now?
Andrew Scoggin. I'm sorry, the loan is with Andrew Scoggin, we bank with Scott Egan.
So why wouldn't you want to save some more, a couple of thousand dollars more to enjoy it?
We felt in the finance committee that we didn't have enough information about what it would possibly switch over to Franklin, all of our accounts. We don't know what the interest rates are and savings accounts there, all that stuff. There's just not enough data to make a decision to go with that, even though it's a lower interest rate. That's what we decided in finance, but this is a full board vote.
Also, if we were to change our banking relationship, we really couldn't do it unless it's hard. We really should be, we've got separated. Do you think we want to change the banking relationship? Is that to be separated?
The request for bids went out just to refinance the loan. All right. We, we're going to base it on this right here. The reason, and I mean, beyond this, that these were sealed bids, we're basically, but the other thing is that Chris and Scott Egan had a disadvantage because he can't say anything. Okay. So there, I'm going to put a motion forward, is there a motion to go with Scott Egan based with the finance committee's recommendation? Paul? Okay. Second?
Second.
First parent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody in the room, both Chris is in favor and it sounds like everybody online as well. So we have all in favor and one extension and Chris Warner. all in favor and one extension and Chris Warner. Scout Egan savings at two-point-oh-two percent interest for four years. All right, nine-point-three, we're gonna get rid of, that was scheduling the week after April break is remote. We're trying to address that already. That's not gonna happen anymore. Okay, we're on to policy. Kathy.
Okay, first off, we want to revise the JLCB administration of education students. And we've got revised, if you're like the state standards, all the changes are under law. And Lindsay has already gone over it, and Chris put the changes. So that's just the revision.
All right, so the motion to revise policy, JLCB administration of education for students.
So moved.
That's Mary, second?
Second.
Amber, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. We will revise policy, JLCB. Next one, Kathy, without policy, KLGA.
So I'd like to be KLGA and KLGA are together, they're new. They are, this relation with school resource officers and law enforcement. And then the procedure that, that goes with that. They are cross-referenced with JKAA, which is use of physical restraint and seclusion. And the decision to adopt it, because we don't have these policies at all, is because we now have a school resource officer. We felt we needed a policy to address that. That was everybody's credit. Kind of straightforward.
All right, so motion to without policies, KLGA and KLGA are.
Are there any changes, those super brands?
No, these are new.
They're brand new.
Jess? Any second? Paul?
Second.
First, did you have questions on? Now, I think, okay. Kathy, this was, this came from MSMA, correct?
Yeah, right from MSMA, yes.
All right, all in favor of without policies, KLGA and KLGA are?
Aye.
Aye.
Is unanimous, motion passed, motions passed. Consideration of that policy, GVP and GVR.
Right, this is, these are both required by the state, they're new. They are they're still compliant with the experiment law, which took us that dang early first. And so we're required, and these are pretty much straight out of MSMA's.
All right, we're voting to without policies, GVP and GVR.
So moved.
Mary? Second?
Second.
Better than Amber. Discussion?
So this primarily applies to our non-union school unit employees and our collective bargaining agreement covers everything with the RTA and the union support staff. Okay. All right, tell me, Reddit, so I just wanted to confirm.
All in favor of without policies, GVP and GVR?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous, which passes. And then the last, you wanna do these together, Kathy?
Well, no, we just want to rescind, uh, KB, the parent involved in education. And we are rescinding it because it's, everything that's here is also covered in KBF, which is parent-involved, entitled one, and Georgia says we're entitled one school, so that's all we need. It's just redundant, redundant, the KB is a redundant policy. So we wanna, we could move together, actually, we could, we could rescind KB and then with KBF, it's just a revision. And the only thing we revised was in our policy, we had K through eight. And we want to make it pre-K through twelve, to apply to pre-K through twelve. Which that's the change.
So we'll take them together. Is there a motion to rescind policy KB and revise policy KBF?
So moved.
Mary, second? Kathy, discussion? Chris?
There's two K through eight references in the KBF. First line says K through eight, title one program. I'm assuming there's none in pre-K or nine to twelve. And then it says annually, parents guarding students who grade K through eight, love the empty space and evaluation content. Effectment is school. I'm assuming you want pre-K through twelve to cover that.
Pre-K, I'm sorry, I got a change.
When we were targeting, we were targeted school, we were K to eight, but now we're school-wide.
So I would suggest accepting the policy, revising
Changes, yeah, I'm sorry.
First sentence and then second paragraph of one. That's all.
Can we just, you wanted to remove all those, right? That's what you're going with. Just remove K to eight.
Case away, actually, in my copy, it says pre-K through twelve.
Mine does the number one.
Number one, and where else did you say, Chris?
Second paragraph of number one, it says annually, parents guarding students who grade K through eight. It also says it in the first sentence, and then it also says it in section three, second paragraph.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, no, it's fine. I just thought we should fix it, so we might have to fix it later. That's all.
The amendment will be to rescind policy KB and revise policy KBF with the amendment saying that everywhere that we see it says K to eight, there are changes to pre-K through twelve.
So, so second, I second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. So we're rescinding policy KB, we're revising policy KBF, and we also change everywhere in KBF that it says K to eight, we change it to pre-K through twelve.
One big deal, just started mentioning.
All right. I move to enter executive session pursuant to MRSA RA six-four-five-six-eight. So moved. That's Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
How are we doing this?
We're gonna go down to the big math room downstairs.
Are we logged in somewhere?
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna grab.
Brian.
The other thing, that's as much work.
Doing the building committee, remember that, sitting in the
Yes, yes.
Sitting, sitting at the Chamber of Commerce field.
Any volunteers for a superintendent search committee?
I would volunteer, Brian.
Mary and Chris also told me that you would game for that. Anyone else?
I can't.
All right, so the search committee, I'll be in touch with you, but it's gonna involve some work just coming to me. I don't have anything else. We, yeah, that's it for tonight. That's the only action we have to take. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.